Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this session of Chris Pampas Town Council for May 6, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda, please. Moved by Councillor Olson, seconded by Councillor Thompson. On the question. Please vote. Please signify if your tablets are not working for voting. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. I have a few comments this evening. But I think we'll go to the treaty acknowledgement and moment of reflection. Please, Councillor Donovan.
We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Chris Pampas exists on the traditional territory of the Woolisstewig, Malacite, and Micmac people, whose ancestors, along with the Pasamaquoddy tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and to the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interests of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you. I do have some remarks this evening. This morning, I was very proud to join our CAO Ian Watson in welcoming our summer students to their staff orientation. We have 25 summer students working in administration, engineering, programming, parks and facilities, utilities, and aquatics. And we are fortunate that a number of these staff members are returning to us from previous years, which is a testament to the positive working environment and educational opportunities that we provide. It's always special to engage with our leaders of tomorrow as they carry out important work in our community. Thank you in advance to all of our summer staff for your contributions to our operations. The town of Chris Pampas is developing a new recreational facility allocation policy and will be hosting a virtual community information session to share more about the process. This policy will guide how community spaces like arenas, fields, and courts are booked, shared, and used. Join us to learn how the town is shaping a recreation and facility allocation policy to better serve you. The virtual session is Wednesday, May 7, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Zoom. You can find the link to register for the session on our website, chrispampas.ca, on the Have Your Say page. The consultant managing the project will be outlining it in more detail during tonight's meeting of council. The Kennebec Haces Valley Fire Department is getting closer to becoming the first accredited fire department in all of New Brunswick. KV Fire Department recently went through an onsite evaluation process by a third-party organization. The data obtained from the evaluation will help the department develop a strategic vision for the department and our growing communities in the Kennebec Haces Valley. As a final pitch for accreditation, KV Fire Department will be presenting to the Commission of Fire Accreditation International in Denver, Colorado, in August. The department would be the first accredited department in New Brunswick, the second in the Maritimes, and the eighth in all of Canada. Thank you to Chief Mike Doyle, Deputy Chief and Accreditation Manager Karen Tuckerton, and the rest of the department for striving to make our fire department leaders in our community, province, and our country. And I also had the pleasure of meeting grade-three students and a few grade-twos from Chris Pampas Elementary School, Lakefield Elementary, and Chris Saunders Memorial Elementary, who helped us plant miracle seeds at our greenhouse. These students will be joining us again in early June to plant those very same flowers around Town Hall and the Arts and Culture Park. It's a wonderful opportunity for these students to learn about gardening and nature. Thank you to our staff horticulturists for guiding our young planters through the process and to all the school staff members who facilitated these field trips. Last month, I joined CAO Ian Watson, Councillors Carrie Luck and Mike Bigger, along with Ross Amir Nancy Grant, at the official retirement of Kennebec Haces Regional Police Chief Steve Gordo. The retirement ceremony coincided with the opening of the newly renovated and expanded Kennebec Haces Regional Police Headquarters on Millennium Drive. This was an important project that helps give our police force the capacity and resources it needs to protect our communities, as they have for decades and as they will as we continue to grow. I had a tour of the expanded area, and it looks tremendous. Outgoing Chief Gordo was one of the driving forces behind the renovations, and I wanted to congratulate him on his retirement and the legacy he leaves behind for new Chief Mike Young, officers and staff, and our community. Thank you, former Chief Gordo. I was honored, along with CAO Ian Watson, to represent Chris Pampas Council at the 35th Annual Red Triangle Award for the YMCA of Southwestern New Brunswick. This year's awards honored Chris Pampas resident Janet Thompson Price as the 2025 Red Triangle Award recipient, and Cameron Keys as the leader to watch. Their passion, leadership, and unwavering commitment to making a difference embody everything the award stands for. This was a first-class event in our region. Registration for swimming lessons is now open. Lessons are offered at the 97.3 The Wave Pool at the Qplex for youths ages 2 through 19. Schedule information and a link to register can all be found on our website, chrispampas.ca, on the Qplex page by clicking 97.3 The Wave Pool. You must create an account or have an existing one to register. Spaces are limited and are filling up, so sign up quickly. Canada will test its National Emergency Alert System tomorrow, Wednesday, May 7. Alert Ready is designed to deliver critical and potentially lifesaving alerts to Canadians, including but not limited to tornadoes, flooding, fires, and amber alerts. Test messages from provincial or territorial emergency management organizations will appear on television, radio, and wireless devices like smartphones. In New Brunswick, the test will be conducted at 10:55 a.m. Also on Wednesday, a cleaner, greener Chris Pampas wraps up for another year. However, on Thursday, you will see many Chris Pampas staff picking up garbage on our town streets. If you are able, I want to encourage residents to gather litter from their neighborhoods and throw it away in one of the dumpster bins at the Chris Pampas Memorial Arena or the James World Field parking lot by the end of the day tomorrow. We appreciate everything you do to help keep our town beautiful. And even though the event is winding down, it's still important to clean up all year around our town. I've been getting a lot of calls and emails, as I'm sure many council members do, since the weather has improved, wanting to discuss the condition of our streets, sidewalks, potholes, driveway culverts, and other issues. While I appreciate that everyone who is connecting with me and with council, I want to encourage you to complete a service request through Q11 Reporter System to alert staff of any challenges associated with municipal property. This can be found on our website, chrispampas.ca, by clicking "Report a Problem." The Q11 form takes only a few seconds to complete, and it's submitted directly to the appropriate staff. It also generates a service request number, which you can reference when contacting staff for follow-up. This is the fastest way to get the results that you are looking for. May is Lupus Awareness Month. Lupus is a chronic disease with a variety of symptoms caused by inflammation in one or more parts of the body. It is estimated that it affects over 1 in 1,000 Canadians. In recognition of Lupus Awareness Month, the Town Hall will be lit up in purple during the entire month. Visit lupuscanada.org for more information. May is also Melanoma and Skin Cancer Awareness Month, a critical time to remind communities across Canada of the importance of sun safety and skin cancer prevention. According to the Savior Skin Foundation, overexposure of UV rays is one of the leading causes of melanoma and non-melanoma skin cancers. Despite being largely preventable, skin cancer diagnosis rates continue to rise, with 1 in 6 Canadians born in the 1990s expected to develop skin cancer in their lifetime. For more information and prevention methods, visit saviorskin.ca. That's all the information tonight that I had to share with you, and we will move forward now with the procedures of council. So thank you. I'm looking for a disclosure of interest. I do not see any. We will go to presentations. And this evening, we are looking at the facility allocation policy. And we have an introduction to the presentation from Forward Creative, which is where we have virtually Mary Ellen McLeff. And she will join us this evening to tell us all about what this means for the community of Chris Pampas. Welcome, Mary Ellen.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor O'Hara, councillors, and Chris Pampas. Thank you so much for having me this evening. I look forward to giving you a high-level introduction to the work that we're going to be doing in Chris Pampas over the coming weeks and some of the work that's been done today as well. And I'm going to kick us off by sharing my screen here, and I'll just make sure that everyone can see it before I start sharing more. Let me see here. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Yes, so welcome, and I should say thank you for welcoming me. This evening, we're going to talk a bit about the recreation allocation policy and the process that we're taking at the outset. But first, I just wanted to share a bit about us at Forward Creative. We turn, generally speaking, challenges into success stories, is how we like to put it. So whenever communities, businesses, organizations, municipalities face challenges, which we all inevitably do, we like to come in and help engage with those communities to solve those challenges collectively and move forward with a path that people feel aligned on and that we have good community buy-in for that path as well. We've been doing this work for five years now, and we've done lots of work across Atlantic Canada. And we're very pleased to be recognized service providers across many of our funders and so on and so forth in the work that we do undertake. And although you see me here today, there is a team of us. So we've got a good team working on this project. And then we also have some collaborative organizations that are partnering with us on this project. On an as-needed basis, we have TA Scott, who does architecture and design. So when we look at your master plan, if there's areas where we want to understand which facilities may be better for accessibility purposes and so on and so forth, we bring in Troy's expertise. And we also have Brighter Community Planning and Consulting, and that's Crystal Fuller. And she helps facilitate consultations as well, particularly with Indigenous communities. So as we dig into the process, we'll kind of speak a bit about what that engagement looks like. But throughout our time working on this project, you may come to meet a few other faces throughout, so hopefully it won't just be mine. So why are we here? Why are we looking at the recreational facility allocation? These facilities are shared spaces, open and accessible to the community. And what we really want to understand from council, from community, and from staff is, how can we create a policy, some procedures, and some rules to make the allocation and utilization of those spaces effective for all of the goals that the community has? And I'll dive a bit deeper into what some of those goals may look like. So a lot of recreation policies, when we dig into them, there are some key priorities, and a lot of them are surrounding keeping decisions fair and transparent. So allowing staff to have a clear criteria to follow when it comes time to make those decisions about how a facility is booked or allocated. They often prioritize access for all. Of course, we want to make sure that our community spaces are able to be used by all of our community members. And although these are kind of three high-level topics, there is much more that goes into the policy. And depending on the municipality and the priorities, different factors take different weight from others. A really important factor that we often or almost always look at is the economics behind those facilities too, because it's great to have access for all, and we also need to make sure that they're sustainable. So we take a really multifaceted approach when we're building out these policies. So as I'm sure many of you are familiar, but you never know who's joining us this evening, I'd like to share a bit about what an allocation policy is. And it's really an outline that provides guidance on which facilities can be booked, how much time groups are eligible to book, and how we balance community needs and access with economic activities. So really, what we're creating is a policy for how we access those spaces and how are they allocated to different groups so that the whole community can really benefit and everyone has a chance to take use of those recreational facilities, which we know are so important to community health and prosperity. So what does our process look like? At the outset, we do a lot of engagement. We speak with community, we speak with staff, we speak with council, like this evening. And really, in that time, we're trying to understand what is important to you. There's many different allocation policies as we look at them across different provinces, across different municipalities. And what we want to create is an allocation policy that represents Chris Pampas and what's important to Chris Pampas. And so through that, we really spend time understanding community and speaking with you to understand your needs as well. And I'll outline a bit about what that engagement process looks like in my next slide. But once we've gone through the engagement, we draft a policy. And then in the drafting process, we share that, and then we move to a vote. And then after that's adopted, new booking rules come into effect for the facilities. So it looks very simple as a four-step process on here, but there's a lot more that gets into it. So I'm going to break down our first step, which is the phase that we're in now, around the engagements. So right now, we're in our first sort of virtual session, which is to yourselves as council. And here, we're really looking at, you know, just a high level of what the process is. And some of you may have already heard from our team members to start booking virtual meetings and in-person meetings with yourselves as well. So right now, we're sharing the high-level information, and we're going to do the same for community tomorrow. So there is going to be a community-facing webinar where we will host a very similar presentation, kind of going over what is the process that we're taking, what is the importance of an allocation policy, and also how community can get involved in shaping that policy. We'll have virtual meetings, as I mentioned, with council members. On the 13th, we'll be in Chris Pampas as a team. We'll be touring your recreation facilities, and we'll also be offering some time up for in-person meetings. If certain councillors prefer to meet in person, we'd like to make sure that that happens. Over the 14th and 15th, we'll be engaging with community groups, so different teams, different organizations that utilize the spaces. And then on the 20th, we'll provide an update on how the progress and how the conversations have been going to date. All the while during that time, there's also a community-facing survey that is available for any resident of Chris Pampas to take part in. And we'll have that survey closing on June 16. So when we come back around on the 20th to share an update, it's a progress update on the engagements. And by the 16th, we'll have a What We Heard report so that everyone can have a chance to really dig into what it is that we learned through this engagement process. I always like to share that, you know, when we plan engagement processes, they look very linear, they look very planned and structured. However, sometimes when we dig into things, we start to understand different things about community that we want to dig deeper into. So although we've got a beautiful process laid out here, we may have a few more meetings here and there to get to understand different priority groups or who may need some more time to speak. And so although it's beautifully laid out, we may have more engagement that happens beyond what you see here. But this is at a high level, the absolute steps that are going to be happening in the next coming weeks. So as I mentioned, there is a survey. So my only ask at the moment is that for councillors, if you are having conversations in community, to share about the survey. Because the more information we can get from community members, the more we can create a policy that shapes what community would really like to see. And that's always one of our goals. And so if you do have conversations and you're able to share the survey, we can share around a link if you don't have it already. And there's a QR code on the screen here where you can scan and also take the survey. But as we start to collect responses, this is going to be critical for how we shape the policy. And if anyone has questions while they're going through, or if you come to meet a resident that may need assistance to get through the survey, they're always welcome to email us, and there are also paper copies available from the municipality and also at local libraries. They'll be available as well. So that's the high level of the progress to date and what our next steps will be. I look forward to meeting with each of the councillors in the coming couple of weeks here, as well as our team. And we really look forward to building out a policy that's going to create Chris Pampas as the leader in recreation allocation. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mary Ellen. I certainly appreciate that. And you said June 16, you're going to consolidate some of the information. Is that the culmination of all of the surveys and so forth? Does that end it, and we get a product at that time?
Absolutely.
Pretty quick turnover then. All right.
Yes, there will be like an interim What We Heard report after the survey closes, and then we'll use that to draft the allocation policy.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? There is a Deputy Mayor Stryer, please. Oh, sorry, it was Councillor Miller. I hit the wrong button.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you for your presentation. I just have a couple real quick questions. So when you talk about the engagement groups, does this include pickleball? I'm just asking because we don't do any of the booking ourselves, but it's the whole community, so.
Yes.
Sorry, I looked at Ms. Pertin Dixon. She just said yes. She sits sitting beside me.
Perfect.
Go ahead.
Your Worship, I would just add that Mary Ellen has been provided a list from our administration team manager, Debbie Allen. So she has a list of user groups in the community, specific private individuals that book our facilities. But we realize pickleball is a hot one right now because our limited court space and the growing need for facilities in that sport. So that will definitely be one of the groups that she speaks with.
Thank you, Ms. Pertin Dixon. Deputy Mayor Stryer, please.
Thank you. This is more of a comment, a suggestion perhaps. One of our largest facilities, obviously, is the Qplex. And a lot of our older adults use the track in there. So just a suggestion, maybe a table with some of the surveys there with a sign as to what it is, and while they're walking, they could pick up the survey just to where they might not do it online. The other one I had was, you mentioned the library, which I think is a great place to have it, the Town Hall and the Qplex. I'm just wondering if there's any place else that we're missing. And I can't think of a place right now, but I'm just, it's going through my mind. I'm thinking there's somewhere we're missing that we probably should have surveys available. But that being said, my other question is about, does this facility allocation, does it include the group of disabilities in New Brunswick? They're included as a user group, or how are you including them?
Yeah, so that's critically important. And actually, it's really great that you bring that up because as an organization ourselves, we place a high priority on hiring people with disabilities. So a lot of our team actually has a lot of experience in equity, diversity, and inclusion. And so we interweave that into all of the work we do, even if it's not necessarily in the RFP. We always make sure to build it into the work that we do because we do think it is critically important. At the outset, right now, what we've provided is a booking link to Debbie Allen to provide with the groups and the contact list for all groups that are using the facility. But as I said, sort of how we have that linear process, what happens is when we get in and we meet with council and we meet with these groups, a lot of times, we start to hear, okay, this group is really important to engage with, and this group is really important to engage with. And so that's when we start to book those additional consultation sessions. But on our list of important priority groups is people living with disabilities, as well as people who are seniors. And so both of those groups are going to have additional efforts made to ensure that we make those inroads to have those conversations, where we know that sometimes traditional engagement methods don't always necessarily feel safe for people from those groups. So we make sure that we make the effort to go out and connect with them. So absolutely, we will be.
Thank you. Councillor Bigger, please.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, and thank you, Mary Ellen, for being here with us. I'm not going to take a chance of butchering your surname, so I'll just call you Mary Ellen. We'll be good friends.
Yeah.
Appreciate your presentation and the efforts being made here. This might be a question best answered by our Director of Community Services, but I'm curious just about, on the page of your presentation under titled "What is an allocation policy", that third point about balancing community needs and economic activities. I'm just wondering if there's some sort of, whether it's thumbnail or just sort of projected kind of economic forecast that we are... Is that part of this process? I.e., you know, we have, to Councillor Miller's point, the pickleball, it's a hot potato, that one. And we have people who just, you know, a bit of a squatters rights kind of mentality about people just grabbing a court. Nobody books it. There's no, you know, sort of cost outside of tournaments, I don't believe, or something like that. But is this headed towards some kind of, you know, sort of fiscal kind of balancing related to use of a booking facility to somehow create an income stream? I'll leave that for whoever Ms. Pertin Dixon thinks is best to answer.
Ms. Pertin Dixon, please.
Thank you, Worship. So we have, as a value add to this RFP, been speaking with our consultants about fees for this project. It's the economics, I believe, in that part. And you can correct me, Mary Ellen, if I'm wrong, but that point of that presentation would have been about, for example, host tenants, hosting events and displacing your users. So is that something that the community wants to see?
Right.
And with regard to the pricing, that would be, for example, and I believe it was discussed in finance already, that perhaps we look at the Consumer Price Index for this year as a recommendation perhaps, because we've had a process that I think, you know, we've wanted to review for a little bit with regard to pricing, and then the user groups also are looking for consistency, not wondering what is it going to be every year, maybe it's three-year funding. So we're going to be talking to them about options. We've had, as you know, minor hockey... So we're going to be talking to them about, about options. We've had, um, as you know, Minor Hockey present, and they want a youth rate at the Qplex. We've had other people that privately that want a book, that want subsidized rates. And so we, those are all things that we're hoping to give clarity to, so that staff can, um, book the facilities in a manner that council and the community would like to see their assets being used.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns for Ms. McLeith? Uh, there is a motion here on, uh, Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, worship. Uh, I move council acknowledge the support for the facility allocation policy. And thank Mary Ellen McLuth. Is that right? From Ford Creative for the presentation and look forward to the next steps in the implementation process.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger and seconded by Counselor Miller on the question. Please vote. Motion carried seven zero. Thank you very much for being with us this evening. And we look forward to, uh, the results of all the work that you are about to engage in. Thanks so much.
Many thanks. Thank you so much for having me this evening.
Have a good night.
You as well.
Item number six, public hearings. Item number seven, minutes of the previous meeting. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. I'd move that the minutes for the April fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-five regular meeting be approved as presented.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Please vote. Motion carried seven zero. Item number eight A, unfinished business, ratification of email poll. Queensberry Heights, Phase fifteen, assent of council, planning and development services manager Dwight Colburn. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, your worship. I would move council ratify the email poll of May first, two thousand and twenty-five and grant assent to the Queensberry Heights subdivision, Phase fifteen, final plan, subject to the execution of the standard subdivision development agreement with the town. So the plan can be stamped and signed by the town clerk and development officer for registration in the provincial land registration system.
Thank you. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Bigger on the question. Please vote. Motion carried seven zero. Item number nine, correspondence. Item number ten, bylaws, two thirty-six Hampton Road, PID zero zero two five one eight four three and three zero two four zero five two seven from single or two-family residential R1 to integrated development ID rezoning application. Item number one is the proposed municipal plan bylaw zero five four dash zero nine. Counselor Donovan.
Whereas a notice has been published on the town of Quispansas website pursuant to section fifteen three and fifteen four, the Local Governance Act summarizing, uh, bylaw amendment number zero five four dash zero nine, that received first and second, uh, reading at the January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that third and final reading be given to proposed municipal bylaw amendment number zero five four dash zero nine.
It has been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Counselor Miller. Okay, Counselor, uh, Counselor Bigger.
Them's fighting words, mayor. Call me Counselor Miller. Uh, thank you, your worship. Just a question, uh, perhaps for our, uh, development, uh, officer. Um, and perhaps the proponent as well, who I see is here with us tonight. With regards to age and place, um, and the change that happened with regard to moving from a rental strategy to a condominium strategy. Uh, am I on the right track here? I'm, you're looking at me funny. Oh, okay, okay. Very good, very good, very good, very good. Thought I had spinach in my teeth or something. Um, I, there was a, some logic provided on that regarding the, uh, possible concern that, uh, by leaving it as a rental, uh, model, that over time, the, sort of the heart and value of an age and place community could get kind of slowly kind of eked out, like toothpaste out of a tube kind of thing. And I just wonder if, uh, and I don't really, I can't, I don't really have any reason to dispute that sort of objectively or eviden- you know, in sort of any sort of evidentiary way. But I just wonder, has there been some discussion at all related to the, um, the affordability of taking something that would be, uh, a rental? That would be perhaps, I mean, I think we could generally say, um, that it's easier for the average person to acquire a rental space than to get approved to buy a place. And I wonder if the affordability component of that has at all been part of the consideration. And I'm not suggesting it hasn't been. I'm not suggesting that the change of direction with this, change of model is, I'm not saying it's a bad thing. But I, it, it struck me, and, uh, when we discussed it at our last meeting where this was reviewed, uh, I, I had, I went away and spent a little time pondering it. And so I'm, I'm just curious if there's any comment that anybody can offer along that line. Uh, and I would appreciate a little more, you know, reflection on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Mr. Colburn, please.
Through you, worship. So going to a condo model provides a little more, I guess, security around the whole intent, uh, because it does create bylaws through a condo corporation. It does have to get registered with the province. It does provide for some level of reserves being with the province to ensure maintenance and things of common areas are kept up to a standard as per the bylaws. That also allows for whether, you know, um, in terms of rentals, it does provide an opportunity for, let's say, the corporation itself to buy several of these units and be able to rent them out at an affordable rate. So just because it's in a condo model doesn't mean that if I could, uh, a corporation or an individual person could buy several of these and then rent them out at an affordable rate. So it provides a little more flexibility. It doesn't mean that every one of these units have to be purchased. That can be bu- built into the actual bylaws of the, of the condo corp. But now it works. So it does provide some flexibility. Yep.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing that there are no further comments, please vote. Motion carried seven zero. Item number two, proposed zoning bylaw amendment number zero three eight dash five one. Counselor Olson, please.
Okay, just a second.
Light was flashing.
Okay, yes. Whereas a notice has been published on the town of Quispansas website pursuant to section fifteen three and fifteen four of the Local Governance Act, summarizing by law amendment number zero three eight dash fifty-one that received first and second reading at the December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. Now therefore be resolved that third and final reading be given to zoning bylaw number thirty-eight dash fifty-one, rezoning two three six Hampton Road, PID zero zero two five one eight four three and three zero two four oh five two seven from single or two-family residential R1 to integrated development ID to accommodate an aging in-place community.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Miller on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote. Counselor Miller, you good? Motion carried seven zero. Thank you. Item ten B, proposed amendments number zero two seven dash three six to a bylaw of the municipality of Quispansas respecting traffic, streets and public places. Consideration of third and final reading. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship. Whereas a notice has been published on the town of Quispansas website pursuant to section fifteen three and fifteen four of the Local Governance Act, summarizing bylaw amendment number zero three six dash zero six that received first and second reading at the April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that council give second reading to the proposed traffic bylaw amendment number zero two seven dash three six, a bylaw amended, amendment that will reduce the speed on Aurora Boulevard from fifty kilometers to thirty kilometers.
Thank you. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Please vote. Madam Clerk.
Um, your worship, I just noticed a typo in the, um, resolution that was proposed there. So it should read, uh, this is the last portion of this. Council give third, third reading to the proposed traffic bylaw. So that is a typo. It's corrected in the motion now.
Thank you for the correction. Yes. Motion carried seven zero. Item number C, proposed sign bylaw amendment number zero three six dash zero six, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispansas respecting signs. Counselor Olson.
Whereas a notice has been published on the town of Quispansas website pursuant to section fifteen three and fifteen four of the Local Governance Act, summarizing bylaw amendment number zero three six dash O six that received first and second reading at the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that council give third and final reading to amendment zero six to bylaw number zero three six, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispansas respecting signs.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Please vote. Motion carried seven zero. Eleven, new business. Assent of council, Harding subdivision, land for public purposes. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. I'd move that council grant assent to the Harding subdivision plan. So the plan can be approved by the development officer and signed by the clerk for registration. Uh, and the LPP land be vested in the town upon filing of the plan.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Bigger on the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
The staff notes up again. They don't seem to be coming up. I can't find it right now. It, it was, um, to, through you to the development officer. The land for public purpose was a fair size, was it not? And I'm just wondering if that land is unusable or the, the status of that land. It was two hectares or two hectares, I thought I read. I can't find my note right now. But, um, so I'd like to know a little bit more about this land for public purposes. Thank you.
Development officer, Mr. Colburn, please.
So what's been proposed is to, the land through you, worship, to Deputy Mayor. What's being proposed is, uh, land to cover obligations for subdivision that happened on the other side of the Hammond River Road that was along by the Hardings. Plus, there's an opportunity for us to acquire more. Uh, this particular area will, as I indicated in my staff report, it provides a gateway and access into the millennium cycle bike park. It's also sort of a, a long-term look at providing sort of a connection with the Hammond River Park. So we're making this a destination place. So there's, it is usable land in there. There does provide an opportunity for creation of a, sort of a parking area, provide access into Millennium Cycle Park. We're looking at also providing a gate, so not just a gateway, but sort of an information, uh, area, uh, that would, sort of the historical significance of it. As I've indicated in my staff report, was the access to the old Perry Point Bridge that used to go across. So again, it's building on this particular area to connect the expansion of the Hammond River Park, the Millennium Cycle Bike Park, and then this particular, it also is location of, uh, conservation area currently sort of under the watch, I guess, of Ducks Unlimited. So it's, it's important in terms of, um, protection of stormwater management, uh, conservation areas, which are all in line with, uh, the subdivision bylaw. By not having ownership of it, yes, it's land, it's, it's, there are some wetland areas in there, but that doesn't preclude somebody from buying it and then destroying those wetland areas. So it's part of a, part of a bigger picture in terms of what we're aiming for that particular area. And there's an opportunity for us to acquire it now versus waiting to see what's happening. So, let's see approach. Thank you, worship.
Deputy Mayor Schreier.
And thank you. Um, I found it now. I found the notes. I couldn't find it before. And I did have the other question. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to see this. Um, I, I'm struck about the history. Tom Burns, the history of the, um, Kingston NB. Um, um, there was a bridge there, or it looks like there was some type of bridge. And I'm trying to figure out exactly the location of that. I know that there was one further down, but I'm not sure about this, um.
Yeah, so that through you, worship. So there used to be, Land Surrey Road was the road that left came from Hammond River, basically went up and over the, the ridge down to the Mollafirm. And then there's still actually the two right-of-ways on the Motor Farm Road where the bridge used to connect to go across to the Perry Point. So there's historical significance in that particular area. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Did we have a motion on that? And who was it moved by?
Uh, Counselor Donovan. And, um, Counselor Bigger.
Okay. On the question, please vote. Counselor Bigger. Are you in favor? Thank you. Motion carried seven zero. Item eleven B, council final acceptance, Fernwood Park, Phase five A. Staff report from engineering technologist. Counselor Donovan, please.
Whereas the developer has satisfied the minimum requirements in accordance with. Whereas the developer has satisfied the minimum requirements in accordance with subdivision bylaw zero three five in the developer's agreement, it would be appropriate for council to grant final acceptance of the Fernwood Park Phase five A subdivision. In addition, we recommend that council approve release of the eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollar bonding to JP Custom Homes Limited.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Please vote. Motion carried seven zero. Item twelve is reports. You have those in your package. Don't see any comments. Item thirteen, business arising from committee of the whole food basket land transfer. Counselor Olson, please.
Whereas council at the May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Committee of the Whole meeting authorized the sale of the property at three forty-six Hampton Road to the Kennebec Case Valley Food Basket for one dollar with the sale agreement that includes a right of first refusal to the town on any potential future sale of the property. Whereas council at the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four Committee of the Whole meeting, council authorized the agreement of purchase and sale of the property at three forty-six Hampton Road to the Kennebec Cases Valley Food Basket to include a right of first refusal to the town on any potential future sale of property. Also to include a provision regarding the use of a fair property value formula, such as the purchase provision regarding the use of a fair property value formula, such as the purchase price being the difference between the property assessment at the time of sale to KV Food Basket, Inc., and the property assessment at the time of council exercising the right of first refusal. Be it resolved that the council authorized the mayor and clerk to execute the purchase of the sale agreement, subject to the terms and conditions noted above pursuant to section one oh two one of the Local Governance Act regarding in-kind grants.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship. I I have two questions. One first on the sale, purchase and sales agreement, the right to first refusal. Does that go on forever and ever perpetuity as long as they hold that? Or is there a cutoff on the number of years that we have right of refusal?
It goes on in perpetuity. I think I see a nod over there, so. Did you want to comment on that? No.
And my second question is just on procedure. I I'm just wondering about voting on this. I wasn't part of the discussion when this was discussed back in May of two thousand and twenty-three, I think it was. So I just wanted to know about procedure, whether you would vote on, whether I should.
I'm going to defer to the clerk, but I, it wasn't a public presentation, I don't believe, so. So you are able to vote.
Okay.
Okay. On the question, it was moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan. Please vote. Motion carried seven zero. Transportation Committee proposed local transit pilot project. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. I move council provide conceptual approval of a pilot in collaboration with Rosé, understanding that a total two thousand twenty-five expense of up to sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars would be required to be drawn from operational reserves and directing the CAO to complete detailed project planning.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for the motion, Counselor Bigger. This is exciting. I do have questions, a question about the route. And I was hoping to get some answers before council, but anyway, indulge me. I'm not quite sure I understand the route, where go, where it starts and where it ends, and whether or not the route includes any possibility that for the four months, I think we're starting in June or July, that those four months would include stops at our aquatic, our, the pool, the park, where our students and youth would probably be traveling to those sites in the summer. And as Counselor Luck had mentioned before, if that is the case, and I'm not sure if it is, the 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 data being collected could be different, whether or not those stops are included. I personally would love to see those stops included. I don't know what the plan is. So if you could just let us, if we could have an idea of the route and where our recreational facilities might be able to take advantage. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to defer first to Mr. Watson.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to the deputy mayor and others. The stage of planning that we're at now calls for both Rosé and Chris Pimpasus to come together for the purposes of exactly that, Deputy Mayor. We don't know the route yet, but things like routing, the acquisition of the service, making sure are any liability concerns are addressed, et cetera, et cetera, are all components of a detailed project plan, which this motion is asking you to direct me to do. So with the motion, then our kickoff meeting would be tomorrow, actually, with your approval, to meet with Rosé and begin that planning in earnest, at which point we would absolutely be developing routing, which we're happy to bring back, and that I would expect would include facilities and and locations such as the ones you mentioned.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Watson. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you to our CAO. He hits the nail right on the head. And very fair questions from our deputy mayor, of course. The route is very key. As the CAO points out, it's, you know, TBD. The discussions that we have had on the Transportation Committee, and our our development officer might be an expert to speak to this as well. We're very fortunate to have him as an asset and his expertise with our GIS system, for example, to be able to kind of identify what might be the right places to, you know, figure out stops. Certainly, the 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 concerns or the thoughts raised by the deputy mayor are key, a key part of figuring this out. We we do need to make sure we get data that is useful in the longer term towards a permanent solution, insofar as we're trying to angle towards sort of the logic of having a permanent solution. I think that the idea of beginning in, well, certainly June is, that is not, that will not be able to happen, you know. I think that we're operating with sort of a second half of the summer and then four months beginning somewhere around the middle of the summer. So it will actually, in fact, capture some early fall ridership as well as people return from vacations and get back to their routine with school and work and so on. So I actually think that what we come up with, my opinion, it's just my thought, is that it will actually capture some useful data outside of just, you know, heading to the pool in the summer or the splash pad or whatever. But I certainly hope everybody does that as well. The logic is to keep it a fairly tight route with with one vehicle in use, maintaining something of a sort of central, you know, aspect, bearing in mind that a couple of our key recreational gems are in our town and not exactly in the middle of town. But anyway, so I guess I'll just leave it at that. And I I don't know if Mr. Colburn wants to speak at all to this, but we'd welcome his comments.
No, I think we've covered everything. Thank you. So there's a motion on the table. It's been moved. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Excuse me. I just had one comment, and I'd like to, when we're talking about our facilities, this Dana Pertin Dixon would would have all the numbers on usage, how many people are traveling to those facilities. So I think that besides the development officer, that that data needs to be collected too from the town as to usage in our facilities, our parks, and those type of recreational. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Please vote. Motion carried seven zero. I am looking for a motion to adjourn back into closed opens. Oh, we have one more? Oh, yes, I see. Yep. Not on my written copy. So we have the policy review. Council approves the policy approval authorities as presented and amended, and that the CAO be directed to immediately begin the resulting work. Counselor Olson.
Yes, council approves the policy approval authorities as represented slash amended, and that the CAO be directed to immediately begin the resulting review work. Further, that council make policy review update, a standing committee of the whole agenda item, unless or until council approves policies are completely updated.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question. Mr. Watson.
Thank you, your worship. It wouldn't be my normal course to interrupt a motion in progress here, but just in terms of the syntax here, because we didn't amend anything along the way, it probably, in the interest of a perfect motion, I would suggest that the motion read council approve the policy approval authorities as presented. Thank you, your worship.
So clerk, we can remove the word amended. So if the mover and seconder agree to that, we can vote. Yes, thank you. Please vote. Motion carried seven zero. We need an adjournment to go from regular open to closed session open. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Please vote. Motion carried seven zero. Seven oh one? We will now go back to our, we will reconvene to open session of the closed session. And
We have a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor for that. We have not voted on that at this point. Would you mind reading that motion again, or I guess I'll go back to it? And that was four, item four B. So we have. And Madam Clerk.
So the the motion will read as follows. Committee of the whole refer to council the draft code of conduct bylaw number zero six eight with additions received before the May fifteenth deadline for consideration of first and second reading at the May twentieth regular meeting.
Thank you. And that was moved by Counselor Thompson, and it was seconded by? No secondary at this point. Oh, that's right. Thank you. I'm not sure. That's why I was asking. I'm going to go to Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to, I guess, share some thoughts on on the proposed changes. And I guess before I share them, I just wanted to kind of provide, I guess, the lens that I look through. So there's a few few things that are kind of going on in my head. One is just the recent occurrence with straight shores where the council has been resolved because of the way the code of conduct happened and was was processed. As well as just recently, through volunteer organization that I volunteer with, they did do some training on workplace harassment and bullying, and I thought it was a very interesting, thought-provoking training session. And thirdly, a policy like this, the purpose is to address or correct behaviors, is not to intimidate or punish per se. It's really to change the behavior that, you know, is is being brought up as a concern. So anyway, that's kind of where my comments are coming from. But I think when we get to a formal code of conduct, so once we've decided that this is formal, because, you know, again, I think that a lot of the code of conducts can be resolved informally. But when it gets to a formal one, again, personally, I would like to see us look at this with the significance that it deserves. So a- and again, to to kind of decide if it's formal, then it should go, it should be a formal process versus it being informal and then informally resolved. I think also we have to make sure that the process supports a robust, unbiased, and fair process. And I do worry whittling it down to three council members. I think it puts a lot of onus on the council members. We're all still human. And, you know, I think that, you know, again, with the significant significance of a formal code of conduct, you know, I think it should stay at the whole council level. I know one of the concerns was that, you know, we're a small council, but I believe we're the sixth largest municipality in the province. So when you look at St. John Moncton and Fredericton, they take this process very seriously. And when it gets to a point where they've decided that it is a formal code of conduct, then they say, we're going to get the experts involved. So and again, I thought that the recent training I I took was very enlightening in terms of what bullying and harassment actually looks like in the workplace. So I guess one of the things that I would like to request is that if we are putting something back in, that we also reach out to an expert in this kind of stuff, like in employment law, to make sure that we're setting council for future up for success. I know we're doing a lot of work on updating our policies, and I just think, you know, it's our due diligence to make sure that the policy supports kind of the legalities out there in terms of kind of what else is is going on, and ensuring that what we put in our policy protects the rights of everyone involved, the person being complained about, as well as the person doing the complaining and everyone in the middle, as well as our town. So again, I would, you know, whatever we end up doing, I would just like to make sure that we do have an expert weigh in on what that should look like. And and I am saying expert versus legal because this is more of an expertise, not, you know, so we may have to actually look for someone with employment law, like a, I I know Kelly Van Busker. That's his expertise, where I think a general lawyer may not be able to give us the insight we're looking for. But anyway, so that's my two cents on the the policy, and I just wanted to state that publicly, to make sure that, you know, in the end, we have the the best policy moving forward for our code of conducts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. I'd like to just comment on some of the things that you had said. First of all, the code of conduct will identify what is considered to be a breach of the code of conduct. It will be in print, and it came to us, as I say, back in two thousand and eighteen through the recommendation of the government of the day. So it isn't it isn't our business to change behavior as much as it is to act as a board and to identify if somebody does breach the code of conduct. It's either black or white when it comes to a breach of the code. And I I don't think that is far-fetched at that point to to identify that. to, to identify that if these are the areas that are, are expected to be followed, then that's what the expectation is of the board. A formal code of conduct, to look at it with the significance it deserves. I think the code of conduct in its entirety is significant, and it's identifying any shortcomings of an individual who may have breached that code of conduct. We're not looking at bullying and harassing or employment law at this point. We are simply looking at what is our code of conduct, and did anyone breach that code of conduct? So I feel that the, the time and effort that has been put into this certainly will give us guidance, and, and I agree a hundred percent with you. If it goes to the point that we require an expert in, in law or, or an expert in, in code of conduct procedure, then we would go to law. We wouldn't have somebody come and speak to us unless it was to the entire council on, who's a professional in proper governance at the, at the table, which we've had several times, both with Eli, Ellie Mina and, and McFarland. So I, I think, you know, we can get too deep into the weeds if we continually picket this and say, you know, what is it exactly that we're trying to do? We are simply establishing a code of conduct that identifies whether or not the code has been breached. And then we have sanctions that, that council can choose if it is not something that has to go further, just an apology or a letter of, of apology by the person who, who may have breached the code. But I think, I think this is getting a little convoluted when we continually push the limits. We're, we're simply identifying a breach, and we make the decision, do we go to legal or do we do in-house? Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I thank Counselor Luck for her thoughts. I know they're very heartfelt and, you know, come from a place of wanting to bring continuous improvement. I don't know if this is helpful to consider, but I was thinking about the, the words informal and formal. And I think that there's perhaps a bit of difficulty perhaps, or it's a bit opaque maybe, to define what formal means in the context of what we're discussing. I imagine it to basically mean it's not these informal things. So if it can only be in, if, if, if it's not informal, well, then I guess it's formal. But I don't take the word formal to imply necessarily something so egregious or so weighty that it, it necessitates sort of leaving the, the council review. And so again, I don't know if that's helpful for anybody, but that's sort of how I look at it. I don't, I don't define the word formal in the, in the language of what we have here personally. I don't define that as representative of a legal requirement necessarily, or, or necessarily requiring an outside party. And perhaps there's a way to, in a solomonic fashion, divide the baby. And I think that, given that we're all welcome to submit thoughts and feedback to the C A O over the next period of days, perhaps there is a mechanism that can be put in place to allow someone who, God forbid, is, you know, on the receiving end of something like this, to make a request along that line. Or maybe there's some mechanism that can be installed along that line. But where, I, I would request that we get a third party to review this, like a, something along that line. But in any case, I know that as it stands right now, for example, there is not an appeal process, for example. So, and that's probably not likely to change. But anyway, mostly I wanted to just point that out. I don't see the, I see a distinction between informal and formal, but I really just see formal as representative of everything that's not these little informal things that we have identified of having a conversation and moving on from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Any other comments on this discussion point? So again, the thing would be to ensure that any additions or comments be submitted before the May fifteenth deadline. So it has been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by? Oh, we don't need the seconder, that's correct. Okay, well, let's vote. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, everyone. Item number C. Procedural bylaw number zero six six, bylaw review framework and discussion. Staff report from the clerk. Counselor Miller, please.
Do we have to make a move mover or seconder before I can? Oh, I'll just move it, then I can, then I can talk about it. So doesn't say. There's no description to move anything. Okay. So I guess I just wanted to speak just briefly on, on my, my letter that I sent in. So just for context, and I'll, I'll respond to the email later. I saw it come out. So when I took, when I, when I got this job in twenty, doesn't matter when, the last four years ago, open was at seven. We had closed, before that, a lot of times was at five thirty-six, depending on what was going on. And our budget meetings were always on Saturday. We changed that in the last few years to, open now starts at six, and budget meetings are in the middle of the week, no problem, but things have changed. And, and closed was before that. So prior, at least my recommendation, closed then would start kind of at four thirty, but four thirty was for supper. The actual meetings usually started at five, or sometimes a little bit later, and so on. So in the last, I'm going to say four or five meetings, we've had closed for about half an hour and then open after. So this kind of stuff, I understand why this is closed open. But then last week, we also had a presentation on seniors and stuff like that, that in my view, that's purely open. So we end up, so we pushed our meeting from six o'clock start, now down to five o'clock start. So I work full time, I work eastern time zones. Some days I can get here, some days I can't. You know, I got here today, one, I wanted to be here, but my boss had a meeting at four thirty, my time, that she canceled a little after four. So I was like, okay, I can make it, because obviously, the stuff that we talked about earlier, that was a little dear to my heart, that I, you know I would be here if I could. So I guess my, my thing is, it seems we've stretched the open, not, and this is my personal view, not all of the stuff that we're seeing in closed open should be in closed open, it should be in open. So I work full time, Counselor Donovan works full time. I work full time, but out of my house, so I can get here in ten, fifteen minutes. Counselor Donovan works full time up in Hampton. And in the past, historic, so we would, it said four thirty, but it never happened because of, we started at seven. And then in the last year after we did that, a lot of times we didn't have closed, or it, it would be like at five or five thirty and four, four for supper. Like, two weeks ago, it was like, close starts at four thirty, be here at four fifteen, which is three fifteen, which means three o'clock. So if you were a teacher and you're teaching a class, you can't just take that last period off every Tuesday, right? So when I signed up for this, I have to ask permission from my company. Now it's like, are you going to be doing this on your, on your time, on first time? In the times that I do it on, on company time, I take holidays. So when I was coming to the other meetings, and when I come to the budget, I take holidays. You saw me at the fire hall there the other day, that was at four thirty. We also had people coming in from Kansas City and everything else. I asked a few people, can we move meetings? So I left that meeting and went to a five thirty meeting, my time, till six thirty, because I work all the way to B C. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't mind that occasionally we have to start at four thirty. I get it. But to me, it seems we're blending some of the open stuff into four thirty, so we can get it, get out of here by seven. Like, if we have a, and that, that's just my concern. It's, it's okay if you can be here all the time, and I want to be here, but I, I can't, because you can go back through the history. I normally don't get here till around five, right? And so by having everything closed at four thirty, I can't be part of that conversation. So that, that's, that's all I'm saying is just, please, if we could look at that in the future, that if it, if it needs to be enclosed open, I, I get it, because we're trying to get a whole bunch of policies. This one I get, but I didn't get last week's, because there was a presentation on it before, and we talked about it, about the seniors, that it could have been definitely in open, right? So that's, that's, that's kind of my, that's my two cents. I'll always get here when I can, but historically, I can't get here at four thirty. So that's, and, and when we have a meetings during the day, sometimes too, and I've seen a few come out lately, is, you know, send a note out first, what days can work? Like, you know, the C A O, and I've met before, but I'm always like, hey, seven thirty, eight o'clock, six o'clock in the morning. That good, that's good for me, not, maybe not good for everybody, but I don't, I get a lot of my work done before my meetings start. I, I usually have six to seven hours worth of meetings a day, unfortunately. So until I retire in a year and a half, then I'm good, they'll be back. But I, I still got to do this, and depending on how the markets are going, my retirement's going differently too. So I'm not on a defined pension plan, so, but, and that was just my comment. It wasn't to be brash or to try to, it was just like, guys, like, every week now we're at four thirty. Like, I, I can't make it all the time. That's, that was my comment, so, thanks.
Yeah, and, and the email that I sent out today was based on his, history. As I indicated, Kirk, that when I started in 2011, we were to be here at four o'clock, for supper. And, and then we started at four thirty. And so that, that, that did, you know, that was back in 2012 as well, when you were elected on. And so I, I called Mayor Grant, I called Donna Riordan, Mayor Dusset, and, and asked them, what time do you start your, your closed session? And every one of them said, four o'clock if it's a heavy agenda, four thirty if there is a lighter agenda. So I asked, what about the people at work? And I believe Mayor Riordan said she had, I don't know, five people, six people that are employed, but she said that was a part of coming on council that they were aware of, that council would start at four thirty. So, so that, that's a given, that, that they would make sure that they were available to come on time at, at, at council, and if they're late, they're late. But, but I did check around, because I know that was our history in the past, and that it's evolved and changed over the past few years. So I, I just wanted to let you know that I did look that up and, and spoke to the regional mayors. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to build on what has just been said. You know, as most people have probably figured out by now, after four years, I'm a policy person. And I think sometimes when we, when we make policies, we have to look at things beyond kind of what's obvious. And I brought this up when we changed our procedural bylaw the last time, where we went from council, our open council portion at seven P M. to six P M. And I think it's something that we need to consider, because there is an election within the next year, potentially a whole new slate of counselors. And we have to look at how a policy or procedures impact the recruitment and interest of maybe some very strong candidates, but also work. So I think we have to be cognizant of how our decisions affect potential recruitment for future. I did send an email to our clerk, as well as, as our C A O, a while back, commenting and congratulating them. I think our new format in terms of the committee of the whole having an open really is working well. It allows us to have some great dialogue. I feel it's a bit rushed, but I think what's happened is that we've taken a lot of stuff that we used to have in our open council meeting that started at six, and moved it into the committee of the whole. So without realizing, kind of, you know, and without changing the bylaw, we've kept our six P M. start, but now we put a lot of stuff that used to start at six P M. earlier, so now it drives the start time earlier. And I think that the information and the conversations that we're having before the formal council meeting is very, very important. And I, you know, and I feel like every time we've had one, I should, maybe not every time, but I would say ninety percent of the time, we're rushed, and we're actually not being able to finish up all the things that we want to finish up, because we have to get to the open. So I had actually made the suggestion back then, is, you know, maybe we do want to consider even pushing the start time of our open council meeting back to either seven, because now it seems like all the discussion has already happened, and it's mostly, you know, motions and kind of moving through the agenda a lot faster. So anyway, I'm just giving you that, because I know that this is the first bylaw that we're going to be reviewing, so I'm giving you my feedback now, so it saves me an email. But I do think that because we've changed how the discussions and the meetings and the agendas of those meetings have changed, I wonder if we do want to explore pushing the time of the open to give us the, the needed time for those conversations, but also in respecting that, you know, we want really good people on council, and that might mean some people work. But if it's constant that it's a four or four thirty, that is going to create a barrier for some people. And, you know, similar to, I mean, Deputy Mayor Schreier passed a bylaw that we were all very supportive of in terms of maternity leave benefits. It's really no different than that. We want to break down barriers to make sure other people in our community might consider serving on council. So anyway, I just bring that up as a point of discussion. But anyway, I, I do like the new format, but I do find it's very rushed, and I feel like we've taken a lot of stuff out of the open and pushed it into a very short timeframe. And I think that's the reason why now we're, we're moving, like creeping up to four or four thirty, which does create a lot of challenges. I have a bit more flexibility than Counselor Miller and Counselor Donovan. My heart goes out to you, because there's some days that I just can't get here either. And, you know, again, I don't think that's the intent of it, but I think that that's the reality, and it may also discourage other people in the future. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Counselor Donovan?
Thank you. I, I would have said something, but Counselor Luck actually said it all. I personally, you know, this affects me quite a bit. You know, I, I work in Hampton, I work a nine to five job, like the majority of most people, and I do try my hardest to get here, but sometimes that's just not possible. I'm, I'm very lucky, privileged to have a boss that, you know, is deeply involved in politics, and she does understand that it's not, you know, it's, it's not a straight cut thing. Sometimes things have to happen, but at the same time, I'm being employed by her. So it is, it is hard to constantly have to change things. And I just, something to just think about is maybe, maybe pushing it, as Counselor Luck said, you know. I have disagreements with quite a few people on council. I always will, but at the same time, I do genuinely care about people, and I care about listening to what everybody has to say. You know, I think we're a team, and, you know, at this moment in time, it's very clear to me that there are, you know, we're a team, and there's three people on our team that are having some issues with, you know, getting here on, at the time that we've all decided is best for council. So, you know, there's a problem in front of us, and we just need to figure out what the best solution would be. And that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to go in and, and push the time back to seven. Maybe there's some sort of happy medium in between, but it's, it's something that I would really like to discuss, and, and I'm going to have the chance to, you know, prior to when we bring this forward again. So I would really appreciate everybody's, you know, open mind when they're thinking about this. And, you know, I know many of us on this council are retired, and they've worked long jobs, and, but I, I don't have that luxury, I still have another sixty-two years to go, so. But yeah, I just really think there's, there's a room for, like some wiggle room, and I, I would really like to hear what, the, the thoughts of other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Deputy Mayor Schreier?
Thank you, Your Worship. I have other questions about the procedural bylaw, but I'll stick to the conversation that's going on right now, and thank you for bringing that up. I, I noticed in our procedural bylaw, the only reference to a time is the start time of council and the end time of council. There's absolutely no reference to committee work when it starts. I would be fully supportive of changing, you know, if we need to move it to five o'clock to help out our fellow counselors, I think that's the right thing to do. And try to, you know, we might have to squeeze a bit more or not, you know, hopefully get all your questions answered, but not maybe a long monologue or, you know, as to the, before the question. Just so that, you know, maybe a little tighter on our conversations and more direct to our point would save a little bit of time. But as far as I, I want to, I, I hear you, and I know what you're saying, and I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to get here at a reasonable time, at, at the same time, taking into account the staff. They work long days too, and it's, you know, two, two out of the, two times a month to come. And. come and spend extra time with us so that we can discuss the important issues to our residents. And I don't think it should be in the procedural bylaw. I want to make that clear. I don't think that we should have a start time to committees. I think that the councils coming afterwards should have that, be able to be fluid depending on the structure of their council. You know, their structure might be altogether different than what ours council looks like today. So I would, you know, in legislation, you have then the rules and regs that go with the legislation. So I'm thinking, well, is there something that goes with this, this procedural bylaw that's not cemented in the bylaw? That we can have that fluidity, fluidity that we may need to make sure that everybody is part of council? So I would suggest that we look at something like that. And then going forward, I do have questions more about the procedural bylaw, but I'll leave those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. I appreciate this conversation very much and, you know, I think the, many of the comments that have been made tonight are setting the stage for exactly what we hoped would happen, and that is a good review of the procedural bylaw to address the things that are of concern to you. I, I do concur with Counselor Luck and others that we are allowing ourselves a bit more robust informal discussion that I think is really important. We're doing it in accordance with our existing procedural bylaw because it does, it's silent to it. So did we do that, did we make that change for maybe prior to us embedding and codifying all that, all that change in a procedural bylaw? Yeah, we did. So in retrospect, would we have done that and will we do that again? Likely not. But, but I think we're in a good space in terms of having a fairly tight closed meeting for matters that follow the Local Governance Act with respect to matters under closed. We need a block of time for robust conversation and advice to staff so that we can come back with meaningful information for decision-making at a future meeting. And then we're, what, you're right, we have tightened up our main open meeting to be a little more formal, a little tighter, resolution, action, next item. So I think that's all really healthy. And to the part of process for bylaw review, this is the first bylaw that you asked us to review with you. So I think this feedback is exactly what we needed as that first blush. And I'm hearing, I'm hearing some options, which is fantastic. We can, I'm sure we can work with those. To speak to the deputy mayor's comment about acts and regs, I'm familiar with that landscape for sure. And the notion of having the procedural bylaw with a supporting council policy that might direct the specifics of time starts and stops, we can, we can certainly explore that to accommodate that interest. Because I appreciate, you're right, it might be council's interest in a future council to adjust that further, but while respecting perhaps the bylaw, at least initially, before someone don't have to reopen that whole thing again. So all to say, I think this is actually really healthy progress and staff is willing to accommodate what you want. I mean, this is your procedural bylaw. You know, short of coming in here every Saturday afternoon for three hours, I think we're pretty open. So, and we're here to support you. So we are a team, absolutely, and we will come to meet you wherever in the middle feels right to you. And I know that you'll be sensitive to the notion that, yeah, there are some long days for staff and to consider as well, but we're, we are in this together and I think we're making great progress. So I'd certainly welcome the discussion and maybe there's a bit of discussion just about next steps here, but I think this is super healthy and I appreciate the conversation. And maybe the clerk has a couple of pieces, but I'll turn that to you, Your Worship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Lisa?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll just comment on the next steps. So I had a recommendation there. It's not, it's not a formal recommendation for you guys tonight, but just similar to the poli, the policy, or not the policy, about providing, the code of conduct, sorry, about providing feedback after this meeting via email is suitable for this as well and that it will be back on the committee of the whole agenda at the May 20 meeting for further discussion. So there's no anticipated consideration for first and second reading at this point. Okay? So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Donovan?
Thank you. I'm just reading the staff report here and it's just what Lisa said about bringing options back. Should we have, should I maybe read that recommendation as far as bringing suggestions back by Thursday, May 15th? Just so we have something there? Okay, so I would move the council provide information and feedback to the town clerk relating to procedural bylaw number 066 prior to Thursday, May 15th, 2025, in order for staff to prepare and analyze the summary of findings to inform council at the May 20th, 2025 Committee of the Whole meeting.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan. Please vote. Motion carried seven zero. We have reports. Do we need the April 15 minutes approved?
No, just for information.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Olson for adjournment. Please vote. Motion carried seven zero. Thank you. Good night, everyone. Safe travels home.